We're going to begin everyone. It's November 1st, 2016. I want to welcome you to the meeting of the Whitehall City Council for purposes and assess matters that may come before it. And ask everyone to please rise for a moment of silence and remain standing with the pledge. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Frymore, please call the hall.
Gray.
Here.
Coniston.
Here.
Tanner.
Here.
Staley.
Here.
Morrison. Staley.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
President Gray.
Present. Mr. President, I would like to move you to the seat of absent member. Second, I have a motion by Mr. Bailey and second by Mr. Rodriguez to excuse the absent member. Ms. Frymore, please call the hall.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes. The absent member has been excused. We next have our approval of minutes for October 18th, 2016, the agenda and regular meeting.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of October 18th.
Second. The motion by Miss Coniston, second by Mr. Tanner for approval of the October 18th, 2016 minutes. Ms. Frymore, please call the hall.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes. The minutes have been approved. Okay, next we have a special, special presentation from Marty Scott Sputh.
That's great.
Okay. Uh, representing Coda, he's the Vice President of Corporate Communications, Marketing and Customer Service, uh, and he's here to speak to us about issues. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Amanda. Name and address for the record.
Well, Marty Scott, 26th Street, Summit Street, Columbus, Ohio. Good evening and, uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Ten years ago, residents of our community, our region, Franklin County, and pieces of some of the other counties adjacent to us, agreed to provide Coda, Central Ohio Transit Authority, additional funding to fund expansion of our service. In that ten years, Coda has nearly doubled the number of hours of service that our community feeds on the streets of our region. We have purchased just about a brand-new fleet of buses now from the, for the, for natural gas. We've renovated both of our fixed route operations and maintenance facilities, expanded our service to new destinations that previously were not served by transit in our community. We've expanded the hours of service that Coda provides transit to members of our community, and we have expanded our mobility services or transit services for members of our community with disabilities who otherwise would not have transportation at all. In that ten years, we have rejuvenated transit in our region and community, and now it is time for us to ask the community to weigh in on whether or not we have fulfilled the commitments we made to expand and improve our service. And so on November 8th, issue 60, we'll be on the, on the ballot asking for continuation or renewal of that funding for another 10 years. There's not an increase, we're not requesting additional funds, we are requesting a renewal of the funding we currently receive from the sales and use tax in Franklin County, and pieces of some of the counties that are member municipalities occupy. For example, the city of Columbus is, has expanded into Delaware County, Polaris area. So, as, while this does add in states like Dallas and Reynoldsburg and other counties, that becomes part of the Coda's capacity to service. In 1986, when Coda had a mere 625,000 hours of service on the street, we were carrying approximately 14 million passengers. Last year, Coda's ridership was 19.2 million riders. Our goal, our board established a goal of 25 million riders for 2025. But then I'm happy to answer any questions, allow for renewal request, and if I was enjoying out of Coda, and I appreciate the time and the opportunity to come here and speak with you, and your team.
I have one question. Could you give me like an example of what Coda might do in the future?
What can I do with the funds in the future? Well, since we're asking for a renewal of existing funding, we will top out its service at about 1.2 million hours. Uh, right now, we are at 1.16 million hours, and we do have some initiative for over the next couple of years, by 2018, we will have, we will be providing a number of hours of service we can't provide on the passenger side. We do have some initiatives, including a transit system redesign, which is a look at our existing route system. Today, if you look at many of our routes, they resemble the streetcar lines that operated in Columbus many, many years ago. A couple of years ago, we looked at the entire system, realized that some of those routes simply don't serve the numbers of people that we have in our community today, nor does it necessarily serve all the destinations where the jobs are in our community today. So, the TSR, we're dedicating the transit system redesign, which will be implemented over the course of 2017 during a service change, will introduce a number of changes and improvements, including more cross-town service, which connects destinations in suburban areas that aren't necessarily taking people into downtown, they're taking them that house. We'll have extended hours of service, including here at Whitehall, on weekends, on the line two and the line 10, and we're also ramping up what we call frequency of service, which means that service that operates at 60, 30, 20-minute frequencies will be increased to 10-minute frequencies and 15-minute frequencies. So, we'll vary line by line, but people are more likely to use and depend on transit if they know that their bus is coming within a smaller period of time. If you're waiting around 45 minutes for a bus, now that's a customer service running, that doesn't mean you're using transit.
Correct.
So, the TSR will include much higher frequencies, particularly on Disney routes, two of which crossway to here.
Could you tell us how many cars, automobiles, vans, whatever, whatever, are taken off the road, an estimate every day of how many are taken, taken off the, the city streets and the freeways, and the benefit that those of us who may not ride the bus may, might perceive?
In the transit industry, we estimate about 40 to 50 automobiles removed from the streets and highways of the whole block. We have, at peak periods, we have anywhere from 270 to 300 coaches that would be operating during peak periods, when I say peak periods of rush hour service, where most people need to be traveling on transit. In addition to the benefits of less traffic for those of us who are driving with, with transit on the street, since we have moved to operating our vehicles, our bus vehicles with compressed natural gas, we have saved approximately $3 to $4 million dollars just to fuel the price point between compressed natural gas and diesel as such, that today we are just about operating CMG, we're buying CMG gallons a month. It has a great cost advantage to diesel, and there are also tax benefits, we have tax benefits for using CMG, and so our price can now almost be lower. CMG, while it's possible fuel, it's cleaner burning fuel, and so it certainly eliminates the act of the bus where you might be driving along and seeing the exhaust of a bus. Right now, about a third, we're approaching half in the next couple of years, our fleet will be operating that way. And also, to talk a little bit about the advantages of transit, even for those who don't use it, first of all, for those of us, well, I use it every day at the wedding, I don't count, but for those of us who do not rely on it every day, it is always there when we get there. And someday, we may find ourselves in a position where we need to rely on something that our mainstreams are getting around. And mainstream provides an opportunity for people who today would have no other option to travel, sometimes even to work, church, or the doctor, even have to visit a friend. Mainstream is there as an option for people with disabilities and disabilities. And then finally, for those of us who own businesses, for those of us who may know people who are looking for work, who have been, who often are looking for employees, transit is a benefit because many people, starting out in the business world or in the work world, may not have access to reliable transit. Without access to reliable transportation, they're not going to get jobs, they're stuck at home, and they're not even going to participate in the economy that all of us pay for driving. And so for those folks who do need reliable transportation, to get that job, and to begin bringing home money, and food for their families, transit is a great, is a great, great incentive for all of us in the community, whether we're in the community or not.
I have a question. The C-bus, that big runs downtown.
Yes, downtown.
I was under the impression that it's funded by a grant, and so I guess my question is, would this renewal in others' funding maybe help ensure that that service is continued to be, to be that kind of love?
We, we intend to operate C-bus as a free service to the customer, not free for us to provide that service, but it is free for the customer, we cannot charge it there. It's not funded by a grant, um, Coda is paying the operating cost of C-bus. However, a number of companies in the downtown area have offered and have provided funding for us that meets, I want to get you to have a look in here, it meets the, the cost of what the fair would bring to us. Public transit happens out of that, that's the nature of public transit, like a lot of our public services. We collect approximately 18 to 20 percent of the cost of providing our service to the fair office. And so, the customer is responsible, paying 20 percent of the cost of their service. What we can ask the businesses in downtown and some other organizations, could you help us re, or cover that 20 percent? And we have a number of companies that stepped up over the last couple of years to help us reach that goal. Long-term, we are still looking at several options by which we can continue to cover that cost and continue to make C-bus free to customers. Very, very popular service.
Yes. Thanks for clarifying that. And to hear right back to Jim's question, you know, folks are leaving their cars in the parking garage and taking that C-bus to go out for lunch or others, other meetings downtown, and it's just wonderful.
Popular now that folks who work downtown, much time people who live in or around the downtown get around, but increasingly, increasingly people are visiting our community. We've recently been working with the Blue Jackets to promote the C-bus, with people who are coming a lot of times to attend, their favorite team playing the Blue Jackets. Um, we learned that many Chicago Blackhawks fans, Pittsburgh fans, and Detroit fans come to Columbus to see them play the Blue Jackets, because the cost for them to travel here, spend the night, get a ticket, go out and do whatever it is they do before and after the game, is cheaper than it is for them to attend a home game. So, we got a lot of visitors.
As far as visitors from other places, because my cousin was here from Pittsburgh, attending a convention, and I called her up and she said, I asked her if she wanted to come here, she was, no, I got the C-bus, it's great.
Glad you're here.
Her feedback was good.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Thank you very much for that. All right, so we're going to deviate from our regular agenda a little bit, and I'm going to ask Ms. Frymore, call the hall, on whether each member of council has given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting and including any ad on legislation.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes. All right, so, uh, we're gonna do our resolution under first reading this evening. That this time is Resolution 67, 2016. It's a resolution supporting the 2016 Coda treaty appearing on a November 8th, 2016 ballot as issue 60 and declaring an emergency. Mr. President, I would like to approve 67, 2016, and move to suspension of all rules. Second. I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Staley for introduction and suspension of all rules on Resolution 67, 2016. Questions or comments? Ms. Frymore, please call the hall.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes. The rules that had suspended on Resolution 67, 2016. Thank you, Mr. President, move to the adoption. Second. The motion by Mr. Rodriguez, a second by Mr. Staley for adoption of Resolution 67, 2016. Ms. Frymore, please call the hall.
Gray.
Yes.
Coniston.
Yes.
Tanner.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Staley.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes. Resolution 67, 2016 has been adopted, uh, and is a, certainly a very worthy, uh, issue out there that deserves the support of, of the people of Central Ohio. All right, we'll go, we will return to our normal order of business, and this is our first opportunity for poll public. If anyone would like to come forward, you may do so, you will have up to three minutes and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. My name is John Wolf, 3723 Elder Avenue, City of Whitehall. All that, I can speak for three minutes, I've been five years. So, I didn't mean, I did my design, I had tried to stay away from the areas where there was nothing possible, and tonight, the next three minutes, we probably will be rewired by several people. The administration played an individual position of street superintendent. This action is still waiting. I cite Section 58 of the Charter, Section 8, classified and unclassified service. This position was classified through Charter Review and Orders, 9575, attached on September 3rd, 1975. Under Section 161, all one of the Charter of the Administrative Code, the state's classified service, so I mean, a pending classified civil service of the City of Whitehall. That means it has to be, that's a test. 161 of the, 37 of the Administrative Code, on the table organization, lists the street superintendent clearly as a classified civil service. Did the administration, City Attorney, do legality of this? Did he talk with the Human Resources Director about this appointment? Surely, the administrator of the Human Resources, she's a little old, I hope, the patients have that position, and she proved they were to advise the administration, or the attorney to advise the administration, and is actually specific. I submit, any public money that is spent for this employee will be illegal and subject to recovery. On second note, I want to go hammer the hall for it. I say many positive things have happened here at the city over the last couple, five years, many good things, but the position of service director, being held in violation of the Charter, Section 49, which states that an individual must become a resident within six months of their appointment. How they're looking at the argument is that, of course, that rule, that various states of residence states not required to be an employee. But, I have no ready challenge in court of Section 24 of our Charter, therefore, it will be a legal infringement. Section 24 of, uh, of the Charter, which is succession, to turn a mayor or a vice-mayor, the servant director becomes in line directly in certain circumstances of becoming a mayor. This truly did not happen, because Charter also requires that a mayor be a resident of the city. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward at poll public? State your name and address for the record, you will have up to three minutes.
Oh, we're, we're toward 4:30, 10:00, 11:00. Thank you for the courtesy there, good neighbors, but I appreciate it. Now, second of, what, have I, rather, you know, passed on game last night, and again, right at stop sign, people are not slowing down, blowing, you know, that apart, and it's kind of a blur there. So, you, you can't just let, the, the, the vehicle light up street signs, that would help, because we are a thoroughfare, from service, you know, they don't say, you're in the hands of the thoroughfare, definitely, you know, that would probably help to see, because we have no park signs early, you know, we have a little, watch out for children signs since 1970. We have no signs that say, hey, park entrance, you know, more on stop with the stop sign, you know. It's, the constant thing, what we see is, is we got to influence the new children over there, and a lot of them use the parks now, you know, see, for you to come right across there, if people ain't stopping, somebody's gonna get hurt. But most of the city will be proactive and help eliminate this problem, try to do whatever we can. The movie, sir.
Thank you. Is there, is there anyone else? Go ahead.
Uh, yes. Uh, the issue of, uh, public, uh, the street superintendent being classified employee is correct. Um, however, due to some changes in our civil service rules that were adopted, I believe in 2014, states that a test or an assessment does not need to be written, it can be a number of things. It can be structured interviews, is what, and that's one of those that took place for this position. We interviewed, I think, five internal employees, and we had a structured in interview. By our civil service rules currently that were adopted by the Civil Service Commission and then authorized and approved by City Council, a structured interview can take the place of an exam. And I would also like to remind everyone that before I was mayor, we had some civil service employees, the clerk of court, and assistant clerk of court, who were put into positions with an interview and not a test. Also, some of the other items that may be used in place of an exam are assessment centers, work simulations, examinations of knowledge, skills, and abilities, and any other accepted testing method. And this is by rules that have been adopted by the Civil Service Commission. So, this is not illegal, there's still civil service employees, and in many times, especially in a small city, when you have civil service employees and the state does not mandate a special kind of written test, or it's not in a contract, this is what we've been using for some of them, many of them in fact, you know, for over 10 years. Now, as for the legality of our service director, it has been ruled upon by the Supreme Court of Ohio that we, as a city, even though we're a charter city, we cannot tell anyone where to live unless they're in elected position. And in fact, this city of Cincinnati, and I believe another city, challenged the Supreme Court on this issue, and they didn't get anywhere. Also, the Ohio Municipal League, I believe, tried to challenge the court as well, it did not get anywhere. So, we do have to follow the laws of Ohio. Our charter is not lawful when it comes to this, and I believe that we have talked with council about this before. And I have talked with council that that is definitely need a charter change on the succession. So, this is something we've been aware of, but as a charter city, we have no, no standing in this area. It's gone to the State Supreme Court, it's been challenged, I think, at least three times, and charter cities have lost. So, our service director is serving legally, and I have looked in very deep into this. Thank you. Oh, and Paul, we will look at that, on that corner across from the park, I think that you have a legitimate concern, and we'll look at that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to come forward during poll public? All right, we'll move on to our standing committee reports, and we'll begin with Administration and Financial Management, Chairperson Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration and Financial Management did meet last week, our minutes are on the panel, and we'll meet again next week, some time after 6:30.
Thank you, sir. Community Engagement, Chairperson Coniston.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community Engagement met last week, our minutes are on the panel, and we'll meet again next week, some time after 6:30.
Okay. Community Standards and Enforcement, Chairperson Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Community Standards and Enforcement also met last Tuesday, then it's on file, we'll meet again next Tuesday, sometime around 6:30. Thank you, sir.
Uh, next we have Economic Development, that's Chairperson Morrison, he's unable to attend the meeting this evening, however, that committee did meet last Tuesday, uh, their minutes are on file with the council office, that shall also meet again next Tuesday, some time after 6:30, and they do have at least one piece of legislation coming up this evening. Next, we have Infrastructure Maintenance and Services, Chairperson Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Infrastructure Maintenance also met last week, their minutes are on file, and we'll meet sometime, uh, in the back after 6:30 next Tuesday.
Public Safety, Chairperson Safety.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety also met last Tuesday, back in the back. I do have two quick notes I want to blow from back, our public safety directors are comfortable, as well as congratulate Team Whitehall, who just competed in the Scott America Combat Challenge, they are in the top 30 in the, in the world, in the world, in the third world. So, if you see them at the grocery store, I want to see, congratulate them.
Begin with the character of the president.
Maybe we meet again next Tuesday, sometime after 6:30, thank you.
All right, next we have Parks and Recreation, Chairperson Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation also, my schedule, our minutes are on file, and we'll meet again in the back, next Tuesday after 6:30.
All right, that concludes the standing committee reports, we'll move on to our official reports, we'll start as usual with our Mayor Ken Mabel.
I have no reports tonight, thank you.
All right, next we'll hear from our City Attorney, Mr. Michael Biffins.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council and everyone, thank you for coming out this evening. Official report from the City Attorney's Office, we had 104 cases, um, in Mayor's Court in the month of September. Um, out of those 104 cases, only 37 were whitehall residents. Contemporaneous to that, today was the first day for Columbus Urban League coming to our Mayor's Court for our new diversion program, and let me kind of explain, just kind of topically, how I envision this going forward. Right now, the City of Whitehall is not paying a dime towards having them here. The Urban League is here as a, as a benefit, as a service. We screened eight individuals today, and we verbally took six. Um, the ideology behind that is to make Whitehall what I call, and I've kind of coined this term, a strategic community to the city of Columbus. As you can see with the reports that I've been giving monthly, the majority of our cases through our Mayor's Court are Columbus residents. So, we can't ignore the fact that a lot of these people need cognitive So, we can't ignore the fact that a lot of these people need cognitive behavior training. They need workforce development training. Our Mayor's Court is not turning into a social service agency. Let me make that very clear. Safety is, is our number one concern, and in that vein, in making us safe, you have to think every individual that comes through our court at least touches, at a minimum, three other individuals. So, to the extent that we can make that family safe, we can then make our community safe. And then it becomes a effect, cause and effect, where we can start actually making change and do something that is, a lot of people talk about it, but criminal justice reform at the ground level. Our magistrate is extremely excited about it. Our prosecutors are very excited about it. So, we're kind of in a wait-and-see position, and as it goes on and as it grows, I look forward to reporting more positive. Now, unofficially, um, we will be rooting for the Whitehall residents on Saturday, and my son will be playing. Uh, so, look, look for him. He is number sixteen, and he is doing his best. I have to retract my former statements at the beginning of the season. He's actually become a, a very good football player. So, that is, uh, our, the report from the City Attorney's Office.
All right, thank you. Next, we have our City Auditor, Mr. Dan Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no official report yet.
All right. Next, we'll hear from our Director of Development and Public Service, Mr. Zach Woodruff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just one small thing. Uh, we continue to work, like, two things. Uh, we're almost done on San Jose Bowl. Uh, we're getting close. Um, and, uh, on Hamilton Road, uh, we continue to make progress there. It is my hope that by the end of next week, the entrance, uh, the new entrance into Community Park will be finalized. I'm out there today. Um, they are working on, I'll call it, a temporary end to the entrance, uh, ditching the existing parking lot. As council is all aware, the plan is next year, and, you know, we will continue the, the new entrance with the circle drive and whatnot. But to get us through the winter, uh, we'll have a temporary extension from the new driveway that'll take you over to Lake Fifty Park. So, I hope to have that hatch open by the end of next week. Um, and so, and the progress continues there. And that is, I believe, all the reports that I have this evening.
All right, thank you. All right, now, I also want to welcome back our Director of Public Safety, Mr. Chuck Underwood, and you're out.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. I don't have any official report, uh, to give, but, uh, I heard from our new Police Chief that he's excited about the job, and, uh, and is speaking very highly about the environment he's walked into. Second is, uh, we, state is indicated, uh, our fire team, uh, Whitehall did very well in this national championship competition. And, uh, like he said, we see plenty of them around, uh, the campus on common, but just congratulate them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, the following official's reports have been filed in the council office. We have the Division of Fire, Fire overtime report for September two thousand sixteen. Uh, that's the only item we have on Communications, Petition, and Complaints. We have the two items listed on the agenda. And, uh, we also have received the following additional items, since the agenda was prepared, and that is the Parks and Rec Special Meeting Agenda for November third, two thousand sixteen, at six P.M. at Whitehall Community Park. All right, so we've already done our verification of copies. We have no items, uh, of legislation for third reading. So, we will move to our second reading, uh, pieces of legislation. We'll begin with ordinance one, one oh three, twenty sixteen, declaring the improvement to certain parcels of real property within the Arizona Development Area to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments and specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be expended.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance one oh three, two thousand sixteen, with the suspension of all rules.
Second?
The motion by Mr. Bailey and the second by Ms. Coniston for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance one oh three, twenty sixteen. Questions or comments? Mr. Frymore, please call the wall.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance one oh three, twenty sixteen, and Mr. Coniston, I'm going to go.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Bailey, second by Ms. Coniston for adoption of ordinance one oh three, twenty sixteen. Mr. Frymore, please call the wall.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ordinance one oh three has been adopted. Our next ordinance is one oh four, twenty sixteen, declaring the improvement to certain parcels for the creative power project to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation, providing for the collection and deposit of service payments and specifying the purposes for which those service payments may be expended and authorizing school compensation payments.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance one oh four, two thousand sixteen, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second?
And a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Tanner for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance one oh four, twenty sixteen. Questions or comments? Mr. Frymore, please call the wall.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance one oh four, twenty sixteen. Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Tanner for adoption of ordinance one oh four, twenty sixteen. Mr. Frymore, please call the wall.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
The ordinance one oh four, twenty sixteen, has been adopted. Our next ordinance is one oh five, twenty sixteen, declaring the improvement to certain parcels along that road in the city to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation, providing for the collection and deposit of such service payments and specifying the purpose for which those service payments may be expended and authorizing school compensation payments.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance one oh five, twenty sixteen, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second?
And a motion by Mr. Rodriguez, and a second by Mr. Tanner for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance one oh five, twenty sixteen. Questions or comments? Mr. Frymore, please call the wall.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance one oh five, twenty sixteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second?
And a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Mr. Tanner for adoption of ordinance one oh five, twenty sixteen. Mr. Frymore, please call the wall.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ordinance one oh five, twenty sixteen, has been adopted. Our next ordinance is one oh seven, twenty sixteen, is making and approving a supplemental appropriation of five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars from unappropriated monies in the general fund to the transfer expense account, approving a fund transfer in the amount of five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars from the transfer expense account to various funds and declaring an emergency. That ordinance is being read by Title Home. Our next ordinance is one oh eight, twenty sixteen, is approving and making a fund transfer in the amount of thirty-two thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollars seventy-eight cents from various accounts in the wind penny fund to the debt service fund, making a supplemental appropriation of thirty-two thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollars seventy-seven cents, seventy-eight cents, I'm sorry, from the debt service fund to the debt service account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance one oh eight, two thousand sixteen, move for a suspension of all rules.
Second?
And a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by, uh, Mr. Gray for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance one oh eight, twenty sixteen. Questions or comments? Mr. Frymore, please call the wall.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on ordinance one oh eight, twenty sixteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Gray for adoption of ordinance one oh eight, twenty sixteen. Mr. Frymore, please call the wall.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ordinance one oh eight has been adopted. Next, we have ordinance one oh nine, twenty sixteen. You think it's easy sitting up here. You got monkeys on each side of you all the time, asking you to eat. And there is, uh, it's, uh, it's Bailey.
Bailey.
Or is it Bailey?
Bailey.
I know, this time it did. I got, I got one over here.
This is, this is.
I said you were reading the legislation. All right. Next, we have ordinance one oh nine, twenty sixteen. It's approving and making a supplemental appropriation of thirty-two thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollars seventy-eight cents from unappropriated monies in the wind penny fund to various accounts in the wind penny fund and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance one oh nine, two thousand sixteen, and move for a suspension of all rules.
Second?
And a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Gray for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance one oh nine, twenty sixteen. Questions or comments? Mr. Frymore, please call the wall.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance one oh nine, twenty sixteen.
Move to adopt.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Gray for adoption of ordinance one oh nine, twenty sixteen. Mr. Frymore, please call the wall.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ordinance one oh nine, twenty sixteen, has been adopted. Next, we have ordinance one ten, twenty sixteen, approving and making and making a supplemental appropriation of nine thousand three hundred nineteen dollars from previously unappropriated monies in the law enforcement trust fund to the law enforcement trust set aside forfeiture expense account and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance one ten, two thousand sixteen, and move for amendment. Uh, the dollar amount should be fifteen thousand three hundred nineteen dollars.
Okay, so your motion is to amend.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so I have a motion to, second, there you go. I have a motion to amend the ordinance one ten, twenty sixteen, uh, by, uh, Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Staley to reapproving and making a supplemental appropriation of fifteen thousand three hundred nineteen dollars from previously unappropriated monies in the law enforcement trust fund to the law enforcement trust set aside forfeiture account, expense account, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Frymore, please call the wall.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ordinance one ten, twenty sixteen, has been amended.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance one ten, two thousand sixteen, move for a suspension of all rules.
Second?
And a motion by Mr. Bailey, and a second by Mr. Staley for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance one ten, twenty sixteen. Questions or comments? Mr. Frymore, please call the wall.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on ordinance one ten, twenty sixteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt.
Second?
And a motion by Mr. Bailey and a second by Mr. Staley for adoption of ordinance one ten, twenty sixteen. Mr. Frymore, please call the wall.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ordinance one ten, twenty sixteen, has been adopted. Next, we have Resolution sixty-five, twenty sixteen, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Whitehall City School District.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce Resolution number sixty-five dash two thousand and sixteen, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second?
And a motion by Mr. Tanner and a second by Ms. Coniston for introduction and suspension of the rules on Resolution sixty-five, twenty sixteen. Questions or comments? Mr. Frymore, please call the wall.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on Resolution sixty-five, twenty sixteen.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to, uh, to adopt.
Second?
And a motion by Mr. Tanner and a second by Ms. Coniston for adoption of Resolution sixty-five, twenty sixteen. Mr. Frymore, please call the wall.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Resolution sixty-five, twenty sixteen, has been adopted. It's the last item of legislation we had on the second reading. On the first reading, we had ordinance one eleven, twenty sixteen, it's approving and making an appropriation transfer in the amount of seven thousand dollars from the staff account to the Department of Council account and declaring an emergency. That's being read by Title Home. Next, we have ordinance one twelve, twenty sixteen, it's approving and making a supplemental appropriation transfer in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars from the record clerk's salary account to the radio operator's salary account and declaring an emergency. That's being read by Title Home. Next, we have ordinance one thirteen, twenty sixteen, amended section nine zero two point one eight, titled Construction, Relocation, and Restoration of the Streets and Public Services Code of the City of Whitehall.
Mr. President, I wish to introduce ordinance one thirteen, two thousand and six, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second?
And a motion by Mr. Gray and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance one thirteen, twenty sixteen. Questions or comments? Um, Mr. Frymore, please call the wall.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance one thirteen, twenty sixteen.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Gray, second by Mr. Rodriguez for adoption of ordinance one thirteen, twenty sixteen. Mr. Frymore, please call the wall.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ordinance one thirteen, twenty sixteen, has been adopted. Next up, we have one fourteen, twenty sixteen, it's authorizing the mayor to add an addendum to the collectively bargained contract with the Communications Workers of America, Article forty-three twenty, as bargaining representatives or bargaining unit employees noted in said contract that was referred to in ordinance number eighty-two, twenty sixteen, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance number one fourteen dash two thousand and sixteen, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second?
And a motion by Mr. Staley and a second by Ms. Coniston for introduction and suspension of all rules on ordinance one fourteen, twenty sixteen. Questions or comments? Mr. Frymore, please call the wall.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance one fourteen, twenty sixteen.
Mr. President, move to adopt.
Second?
And a motion by Mr. Staley and a second by Ms. Coniston for adoption of ordinance one fourteen, twenty sixteen. Mr. Frymore, please call the wall.
Gray?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Tanner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ordinance one fourteen, twenty sixteen, has been adopted. Our last item of legislation this evening is ordinance one fifteen, twenty sixteen, authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver a purchase and sale agreement and other appropriate documents on behalf of the city to buy the Schofield Drive portion of tax parcel, zero nine zero 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 eight four zero two, from Office City Incorporated for one dollar. That ordinance is being read by Title Home, and as I said, it's the last item of legislation we have this evening. It's our second opportunity for all public. Anyone would like to speak, uh, for council? If they come forward to do so this time, you'll have up to three minutes. All right, so we'll move on to Community Day Board.
Good evening, council. Uh, just for a couple of things. One, I wanted to make a brief note last night for the community department. It's like everybody had a really great time. I love kids. Wanted to let you know about, um, initiative community department. Um, the, it's my understanding that the police department entrance at ten AM opens this coming Friday. It will be open for ninety days. And our new Police Chief has kind of taken, um, he wants to take some additional steps to get information about, out about the fact that we're hiring. It kind of broadened scope for hiring. And so, because of that, we will be holding two community open houses. Um, the police officers will be here and talking with council members, answering any questions they have about urban enforcement. And one of those is going to take place next Wednesday from six thirty to eight thirty, right here. And then another one on Saturday, the twelfth, from eleven to one. All of this information is on our website. And we've been working with local schools, local justice departments, majors who kind of that information out throughout Central Ohio. So to know what anyone's looking for during the law enforcement. So that's fine. So I wanted to let you know about those two things. I'm sure Karen will speak to it. But also wanted to mention the Southern State Grade coming up on that same day as well. And all the other fans starting at third elementary. And I also wanted to remind everyone that the YMCA community needs a segment, our community needs a segment survey and focus groups are ongoing right now. We are looking for additional members to participate in our focus groups. And you can find that information right on our website. And, and please, if you haven't already taken the survey, do so. And we have about a hundred and fifteen surveys so far and we're going to get to the three hundred mark, so we've got a long way to go. So please put that in the nation.
This Saturday is the Whitehall versus Bexley game over at Bexley. So come see our boy, Mike Evans', score at the show. Let's hope, don't try to hurt everybody.
It's gonna be two.
I'm sure it will be. I have a good feeling about it. Just kind of an update on the Halloween walk, and I want to thank so many of my council members who are there. And I really thank you all for coming. It was, I've never seen so many kids and families come out, which was amazing and exciting. We had over two hundred and fifty children come out to it. We don't know how many family members were there, but it was, it was very, very crowded, they say. But truly, truly exciting and that just means that next year we'll want to make that event even bigger and better. So I've never choir.
Bean Fattow.
Oh, oh, yes. When Bean Fattow was this time. They were hosting our state, actually. But it was a great event, just like Yelson, the Southern State Grade is just weekend halfway. So hopefully, everybody will want to join in the fun of that, too.
There's no such thing as a parade, you know?
And then maybe, yeah.
High school, hot dog.
Hot dog is a hard one.
Yes. Wolfherd?
I think so.
Sheen?
Wolf.
Okay.
Round.
Hmm? All right, who else has something for Community Day Four?
Just to play off of what Yelson achieved in initiative this, well, Friday, we have two brand police officers who will be swearing in at four P.M.
Three?
Three. Here in the council chamber, so if you can make it, so I can see you.
Thanks, all right. Anyone else have something for Community Day Four? Yeah, all right, we'll move on to poll council, we'll begin with Mr. Gray.
I just want to thank everyone for coming and a good evening.
I agree. Thank you, everybody for coming. Hopefully, we'll see you next time.
Mr. Tanner?
Thank you, Mr. President. Nice to meet you, face to face. Yeah, piggyback what Karen said, good ballgame coming on Friday, Saturday night, seven o'clock. And Mr. Vivens left out another good thing about his son. His kids are really, really, really good kids, so.
We got lucky.
Yes, we did, so that's all I have.
Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to give a background to everybody else that makes it for coming, I'm glad to see you guys here. I do want to tell Mr. Vivens a success story of the Urban League. I did have a citizen call me with trouble finding jobs, but I gave her the information that you relayed to us. And she was able to reach out to the director and help place with the job, so thank you for bringing him into the city. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, and Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, Mr. President. Nice to see you home today tonight. And Whitehall can be Bexley.
Is that right?
Yes. There we go. There we go. It's just be ourselves.
All right, Mr. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I can't believe no one else said this, but I'm overwhelmed by this crowd. I mean, it's.
It is more than usual.
That's all I have, thank you.
All right, well, I want to thank everyone for coming out this evening and for the Reds. Indians fans out there, go Indians, get more of the Cubs, let them know. Go Cubs. Mr. President?
Move to Karen, I want to watch the game.
All right, well, we do have no other official business before, so that's an appropriate, uh, you thought I would be able to get that in there, didn't you? But, and my someone second said, we're gonna sit here.
There you go.
I didn't hear it. All right, that's only you.
Yeah, this old man.
Oh, okay. Well, we ain't here to interrupt you, that's, that's, all right, please call them.
He said, don't try.
All right.
With the terminology correct.
Reds? Mr. Please call the hall. Yes. All right. Yes. Ms. Frymore, please call the hall.
Gray?
Her name? Yes.
Coniston? Yes. Tanner?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
All right, we are in turn. We'll see you all over next meeting. Don't forget to vote. Most people have.
I'm, I'm gonna be there. Oh, no, we're not. The fire. The monkey's on me.
Because some of them, they're sitting next to you.
Well, this is a good job to ladies. I'm really happy.
Yes.